Yeah, I would like to recognize some of my deputies and supervisors tonight. On October 20th, 24th, we received a call of a juvenile subject that was on the Paris Land Bridge that was threatening suicide. And I had several of my deputies respond, including my captain, Sam Mill, who's our hostage negotiator, person. Actually, there was five deputies that were there. And together, they were able to remove the juvenile from the side of the bridge where he's hanging his feet over. And for that, I want to recognize them and give them this commendation for their quick actions, their professionalism, and their compassion in bringing this incident to a good resolution. And it could have turned out very, very tragic, so very proud of them. And I'm gonna call them up real quick and we'll get it taken care of and then we'll get back on. First we go to Captain Sam Mill. And I'll read this, just this one for everybody. For your quick actions, professionalism, and compassion, whereas on October 20th, 24th, you along with other members of Stewart County Sheriff's Office prevented the juvenile from jumping off the Paris Landing Bridge. You're commended for your service to this team. Lieutenant Ronnie Dodd. And I think the 21st officer is active, that's get his hand on the juvenile and keep him from jumping. Investigator Daniel Soffield, played a large part in that information, dropped into the juvenile also. Deputy Zach Bridger. The last deputy, Grayden Grex. Incidentally, Grayden will be leaving the sheriff's office at the end of this month. He'll be going to highway patrol, so do a proud of him.
We'll call a meeting to order. If you don't mind standing, I'll ask Mr. Peet, Mr. Cleveland to follow up and let's leave, please.
Holy Father, we come together tonight, first meeting of the new year. Lord, I ask your guidance throughout the year coming. Lord, give us the wisdom. Give us the knowledge and give us the patience, Lord, that we need to deal with everything that faces this county. Father, I do pray tonight that if we have any disagreements, we just agree to disagree and go our own way. Lord, I do pray tonight, Father, for our military wherever they are, keep your hand on them, keep them safe, bless their families, Lord, bless them, in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with thy duty and thy justice.
This is Taffel, last is Natalie from Doug's Oco.
Elijah Thomas.
Here.
Brian.
Yep.
Justin Booth.
Here.
Rick Joyner.
Here.
Shane Case.
Eric Watkins.
Here.
Terry Bichu.
Here.
Ms. Gray.
Archie Crier.
Here.
Melissa Fields.
Here.
Bradley Jones.
Clint Mathis.
Here.
Mark Dorch.
Here.
Alexis Taylor.
Here.
I will note, Commissioner Shane Case called before the meeting and stated that he was dispatched to a fire in Robertson County with his job, so we hope everything works out there. On a second note, a roll call that I'll add, you all know that we had a commissioner, Mr. Bradley Jones, was in a horrific wreck right after the commission meeting, a couple of days in the morning, a couple of days later. And he's, I spoke with him Friday. He is better, but he's nowhere near where he needs to be right now. And I asked if there was anything, you know, we could do, period, and he stated no. He did get granted to stay where he's at for a little while longer by his rehab that's going into place, but he did ask for your continued prayers. He said he feels like they're working. He's had some, some things go on that are positive in the last few days where he's at. And, but I will tell you, he's a trooper. He called one to talk about the agenda. I was like, no, we're not, you get better. We got you here, you get better. So I think, I think it's very admirable that he even thought about the county when it was, he was still struggling to move lanes. And I think that's pretty admirable. But anyways, I'll move on. Number five on your agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes. Motion to approve, sir. Motion by Mr. Watkins. Second. Second by Ms. Fields. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Number six is the approval of your bi-monthly reports that are in your packets. Motion by Mr. Joyner. Second by Mr. Mathis. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Number seven, Stewart County's debt management policy is for your annual review. We do not have to adopt that, correct? That stays, we just reviewed. Does anyone have any discussion or questions about that review? Okay. We'll move on to number eight. That's Stewart County's cash flow forecast. It's similar to what we have done. I would entertain any questions. I will send them to Heather, but I entertain them. Thank you. Number nine is the approval of notaries. They're listed there, and we have one renewal, Ms. Lisa Collins. Y'all like to vote on them the same, we can do that or we can do it apart.
Motion to approve among.
Motion to approve by Ms. Fields.
Second.
Second by Mr. Thomas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number 10 is the discussion of TBA impact money. I'm not gonna go into the whole spiel of how we, we got TBA impact money. It was a long time coming, I felt, and we put some long days in on it, but we got it. So, TBA impact money, TBA is ordered by State Statute 679101. And it specifically says that TBA has to take 3% of its gross revenue and put in account and give to counties that are impacted by TBA during the construction phase. This is different than in lieu of money that we get every year that goes into our school systems and things like that. So, we didn't get it the very first year. I thought we had a good chance of getting it, so, but we did get it this year. It's $890,000. Now, this, this money will go away, but while construction's going on in Cumberland City, we will receive these funds. It might not be 890, it may be $15, or it may be 2 million. We don't know. We never know until the end of the year, and then that's when they'll do it. When construction has ceased at that site, they will have a step, they'll have one year that we'll get it after that for the 100%. Then they'll have three years of step down. So the last year will go completely away. With that being said, I'm delighted with God. I'm not happy, I'm happy, but I'm not happy, when I first got the letter, it had Henry County on it. I love, I've got family and friends in Henry County, and I spend much as a tax dollars over there, okay? But I don't know why they got, I'm just gonna be honest and transparent. They got two rivers in between them and they're, I, the way this impact money works is, is this 3% is in a blue, and every county that's impacted, the TBA gets a portion of that. So with that being said, I'll make this my only public vocal speech about it. We would've got another $500,000 if we hadn't had to give it to Henry County. And again, I've got family and friends over there, and they, they are, they're okay with it. And I've asked TBA, I've asked, I want an explanation. This little old rural county mayor, I'm not gonna get an explanation, so, because that took $770,000 away from the county, and Paris got $224,900 only. So you see your legislators, or you got friends tied up in TBA, ask them, why in the world did, did Cumberland City, who's got TBA sitting in the middle of them, not get anything, but Paris did? It's just a valid question, so. But anyways, we're happy, we're not crying over it, we're gonna go on, we got $890,000. It, this is some of the first state and federal dollars that you'll see that there's not a lot of things tied to. I can tell you after speaking with some of the committee with TBA that they want it spread out and made an impact. When they say impact money, it wasn't necessarily meaning impact of roads or impact of school systems, of new employees, or anything like that. They wanted to make, they said, we're making a negative impact, we want this money to make a positive impact. So that, that was the gist, that's the gist of the impact money. I'll answer any questions I can about it, because in the next item, we're gonna talk a little about a small portion of that money. So if you don't have any questions about the impact money, I'll move to 11, and you will probably make more sense if you ask it there. Number 11 on our agenda is the allocation of $85,095 for road construction at the industrial Simply put, that's a Cumberland City road. Cumberland City don't have the money. I don't know how to put it any plainer than that. They don't. I've been in contact with the mayor as of Friday even, they don't have the money to fix that road. We have a really good chance, a viable opportunity to rent, to land two pretty good-sized companies in the industrial development board right now. I've been in close contact with both of them. We're working hard to get them there. Both of them's first question is, why in the world is this road like this? If you've been in the industrial park, if you've seen my wife come in there and said, oh, there's something on Facebook about that road y'all are trying to work on, somebody busted a tire on it and it's like, work on that stuff. So, Mark goes down there, and Terry is on the industrial board, it's in bad shape. I have asked Houston County for $85,095. I have asked the Industrial Development Board slash Ship Board for $85,095. Houston County has approved that charge. Houston County has approved their money. Now, we all, I am asking the Industrial Development Board to sit down and have a maintenance plan going forward. I don't think it's Stewart County's responsibility to keep that road up. So, and we got roads in our counties that need fixing. However, our industrial park, even at now, is in that park. There's 100 and 120 trucks come out of Georgia Pacific every day. You know, 60% of their workforce is Stewart County. So, no, it's not our responsibility, but if we are gonna try to benefit that industrial park and roll it over into our county citizens, we have, I feel like we, we have to use this impact money to start off with for that. Do you need a motion right now? Or, I mean, it, it, well, we, we're gonna have to put it in resolution. We have, so, yes. You've recommended this, right? Yes. Okay. Motion to approve. Is there any discussion? I don't wanna move on without discussion of impact money.
So is all the ones that are approved now, if we pass this?
Yes.
So who is gonna take care of the road? We gotta put it out to the bids?
Well, I'll let, I don't know about the actual doing, the actual construction of the road, but you're talking about going forward.
Once you get the road done up and whatever tears up again, who's, who's like, who's on the books to fix it?
Mr. Bichu is the vice chair of that board, so I've asked for the board, I asked him for the board to come up with a maintenance plan. I'll be glad to help any way I can, but I'm, I'm a working member of that board, I'm not a voting member of that board. So I'll be able to help and, you know, all I can on a committee to have a maintenance plan going forward. We do have some, what I feel like's good ideas, and we had some citizens bring us some good ideas about certain ways we can bring the Industrial Development Board, Cumberland City, and the folks that are actually the company owners together over the next several years.
Who built the road?
Who built the road? The road was, I'm gonna defer that to Terry. What I understand is the industrial board built it, but it was taken over by Cumberland City, is that?
So it's Cumberland City's road?
Yes.
Mark and I own it, right? And if we go ahead and three-way split and redo that road, who's responsible for the upkeep? Cumberland City or?
It'll be, as of now, it'll be Cumberland City. And what we wanna do is come up with a maintenance plan for that road, so that there's several stakeholders involved with that road.
Should that be put in this?
Well, if, if.
Next administration or two administrations later, if you have it on record.
We can, we can, if you would like to add that, I definitely don't have a problem with that at all. What our money will be, will be going to the shipboard. This money won't be going to, directly to Cumberland City. This will be going to the shipboard, and the shipboard will delineate out, because there's too many entities involved that may have different procurement policies and things like that, that we don't wanna be a part of that. We don't wanna, we walk a fine line, and something happened down there, I would lose my office, because Heather would take it over.
So who's awarding the bid to do it?
That'll be up to the industrial development board.
Hey, it might not come in at that price, you know?
But we had a, we had a, it wasn't a, they weren't turning in a bid or anything. There was a gentleman came down, and I'm not for sure his name, Mayor Brake over to Houston County got with him and said, can you come give us an estimate of what you think this road costs? I'm not for sure what company that man was, they did it for a living. Fire construction, okay? So they, they came down and gave him three different lakes to fix this road. This was what Mayor Brake felt like was the most equitable and the best fix also for the money, so.
And we're already running into traffic over that road?
Yes. The industrial development board, I don't know if any of you've been down there, but it's a long mile and a half road, and, and at one time, the board deemed it necessary to stop trucks coming out of the, the north entrance of the park. So they were traveling the long way of the road. Well, 100 trucks a day, well, 120 trucks a day easily between both the companies. Now the, the development board has said, you're going back out the front way, because it's a quarter of a mile right there. So if they tear up a quarter of a mile, of course, it's a lot cheaper than the mile and a half. So that's what they've done to remedy, just straight off the bat, that's what the board has done to remedy that for the short term.
I have two questions. In that resolution, it says that they were gonna make repairs and do some overlay, or do some patching and then do some overlay. Are they gonna mill any of that up? Because it goes back to the same thing as any other road. You just throw asphalt in a hole, it's not gonna say that.
My understanding, they'll dig out the two solid, the two bad solid blocks later, dig those out, and rebuild it three packages.
I know they're capping, but I don't know about the rest of it. I don't wanna.
Yeah, I mean, if you've got a bad base and you do nothing but put more on it, it's just gonna crumble.
You're planning on digging that out like Mark, and redoing it before it, before it pays.
Okay. That was number one. Number two, you said it was 890,000?
The impact, tell them.
Yeah, impact, is that for us, our dollar?
Yeah.
And we're gonna spend 85,000 on the river. What's your plan with the other 805,000? Do you have a plan?
Well, my plan is gonna be different than y'all's. And I mean, I'll tell you my plan, but that doesn't mean that any of your plans aren't gonna be the one that we choose either.
Right.
I don't know if that's what you're.
No, I just wanted to, what's your thoughts, like, where, where do you see it going?
The one way I know that we can impact the entire county, I haven't talked to you about this, I've talked to Ms. Alexis about it, but the one way I know that I can, that be physically responsible and impact the counties, is for this first payment only, first payment. Divide it up, and you go back to your districts and spend it.
Or not what they want?
I don't know what you need in Indian Mountain. I come down there two or three times a week, I go to Cumberland City a couple times a week. I don't know what you need. I know this 85,000 has to go to help Cumberland City out immediately, because the way TBA is down there and now dying, things that are dying, I know that that need, that is a need. But to me, I say put it back out in these districts. That's what I say. If you have a church that needs a generator so that they can keep the lights on during a storm, and they're helping the county out with storms, which we have a lot of right now, I see no better money than, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
If you're one of the districts that didn't get a park this time, you know, Lord, if I get elected again, I'm going back after more money of that grant money, you know? So hopefully we'll get you a park next time. But if you wanted to take your 85,000 or whatever, Alexis and I did the homework on it the other day, it's something like 84, 85,000, I believe. If you wanted to take that and put in a playground or whatever's to do with your county folks and find out what they need in their district, because we don't ever have this opportunity. I know one thing, we can't, I mean, I would love to put it in our salaries and things like that, but it's not sustainable, we can't do that.
Right.
So the way you could help the entirety is to roll it back in and let, and let you guys find out what you need in your community. That's my plan. I know it sounds simple, but with the first impact payment, I don't, I mean, if, you know, if you think you need to give it to your nonprofits, give it to your nonprofits. But you wouldn't, I mean, but, I say that, but if you're not physically responsible with it, you're gonna have to.
Answer for it.
You're gonna have to answer for it.
Yeah.
So, so, yes, my plan, that's my plan. I mean, I know Alexis has got some, another plan, so, I mean, I think it's, I think she's got as big a say as I've, I figure.
Well, I'll just throw mine out here. I gave all of you some information, talking about Cumberland City not having funds to fix the road. When, and I tried to kinda explain it to y'all, the in lieu, the yearly in lieu of tax money that the county receives is broken down into three categories. Last year, they received 3.2 million dollars. The breakdown was, a school fund got 1.8, general fund got 1.4, and highway department got 71,000. Cumberland City, in lieu of tax money, they received right at 17,000. So that's a lot of money that the county's receiving in lieu of taxes for, for the plant being in Cumberland City. The plant's been in Cumberland City, operating for 51 years, so this money's been coming for 51 years into the county. If you notice in those categories, there's not anything that's coming back into Cumberland City to help with infrastructure, or there's not any dollars that's coming back into Cumberland City. So I wanted to, I wanted to ask you to consider some of the impact money, a bigger portion, 85,000's already, is it, it's coming out of impact? Is that correct?
If approved, yes, ma'am.
Yes, okay. And I wanted to ask you to consider more money coming into Cumberland City. We've got a lot of needs. If we had some more, more funds, maybe we could apply for a grant, have some money to match money for that. The building, the old building is gonna go from the Parks and Rec grant, but that's not, that's great, but we've got a lot of need. And I just feel like that this, you know, impact money, we are the impacted place. We have noise pollution, we have air pollution, we have heavy traffic, large truck traffic, Justin knows what I'm talking about because he's over in there, that tears up our roads regularly. We live under the ammonia threat all the time. We are ground zero for being impacted. The rest of the county, as well as surrounding counties, Houston, they've been impacted by that plant, that plant being there by, in a positive way. The new gas plant coming, the plant that's been there, it's provided so much good employment for our area. And so, you know, this part of the county has not really been affected in a negative way like Cumberland City has. So this is just an opportunity for money that's not coming out of the budget, but money that's out there, the impact money, for some of that to come into Cumberland City in addition to the 85,000 that's being proposed for the road. I'll be glad to see feedback on this.
So that should be enough for y'all to chew on, and, 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 you know, this, this impact money doesn't have to be spent tonight. I don't, you know, you think about, you know, how you structured, if any of you come up with anything in the next, let's say, two to three weeks, just give me a call and I'll, I'll come meet you and see if, you know, let you spin it by me, see if we can put a plan that, you know, I'm all ears, so. My plan ain't to end all of y'all. You know, I, we could find somewhere to build a rail, I'm good with that. I'm good with anything y'all are good with, really, but we appreciate the money that TBA give us. We would've really appreciated the money that they give in the county, but, so. At this time, this time, I think this is the second one. Second was Mr. Dorch. Do we have any further discussion on the approval of the 85,095? Do we have any more discussion on that? All in favor, oh, let me go, let me do a, you mind? Sorry, I sprung that on you. At this time, we'll do a roll call vote.
Terry Bichu?
Yeah.
Archie Crier?
Yes.
Melissa Fields?
Yes.
Clint Mathis?
Yes.
Mark Dorch?
Yeah.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Elijah Thomas?
Yes.
Brian Teager?
Yes.
Justin Booth?
Yes.
Rick Joyner?
Yes.
Eric Watkins?
Yes. Thank you. Number 13 on tonight's agenda, Stewart County Highway Department change of crush stone bid award. That's in your packet. Road superintendent, Mr. Ronnie Summers here, if you have any questions.
Oh, the word is in.
Yeah, let me back up. I'm working through them a moment ago, now I shouldn't have done that. Check that out. Y'all just chill, we're gonna be budget amendments, let's roll them back a little bit. Y'all trying to get out of here. No, I don't wanna do it all the way uncovered, because I covered it twice, that's better than once at all. Number 12 is the budget amendments. I'll turn that over to Mr. Dorch.
They all passed the budget finance committee, we'll do approval.
Motion to approve by Mr. Dorch?
Second.
Second by Mr. Watkins. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Y'all might've heard of this one before, but number 13 is Stewart County Highway Department change of crushed stone bid.
Make the motion.
It was in the budget finance.
They were, you saying it's not in there? No, it's, it was in the budget, it was approved by the budget. It was approved all along. Change in crushed stone bid award. Motion by Mr. Crier? Second by Mr. Dorch. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Number 14 is the general maintenance agreement with local agencies, Stewart County Highway Department, State of Tennessee Department of Transportation. Also defer that to Mr. Ronnie, if you have any questions.
From the end of the packet, it's, I got it in the house, sir. Had in there a Lee Holler, I guess it's ordered number 8, 08224. What does that do there?
Do you remember where, I don't wanna say his name, do you remember the head where the two cars had the impact and the void passed away?
Correct.
Everyone to do some signage and stuff like that, you know, to slow people down. Everyone to do some signage and stuff like that, you know, to slow people down.
That's, they can use it, and that's, that's basically it, just signage.
Yes, on, on the gravel roads, it's a lit creek and Lee Holler, it's just signage. Long Creek and Bumpus Hill Road, it's re-stripping the roads and some signage.
Well, why I got you here? I wanted to say thank you for what you've been doing.
Well, I appreciate you doing this.
Give you a little recognition. Okay, but what's better than that?
You can give us a little impact money.
What even is better than that? Some of my constituents, some of my favorite constituents, Harry, Harry and Nella, Rowling, wanted me to tell you in a meeting how much they appreciate what you're doing.
Well, I can't do this.
So there it is, decent people in the community wanted me to do this openly in the, in the meeting, so I'm doing it. People is watching, people thinking.
Well, I should thank, thank you, Matt.
I did.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Matt.
Motion of road.
Motion by Mr. George.
Second.
Second by Ms. Fields, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number fifteen is a resolution, it's a joint county water projects. This resolution is, is, it says it all really, but it's to explore unifying some water districts.
Like Montgomery County?
Well, with several water districts. We, the hope is one day, not, you know, we have so many things that are, if Dover ever wants to have a water catastrophe over here, we can't get over to North Stewart to get water. We, Cumberland City here and they don't have the water. So, you know, we're exploring as a lot of the mayors met, asked Charles to come along with us to the meeting. Just exploring tying in some, some facilities together, going after some larger grants. Hate to keep bringing Cumberland City up, but Cumberland City has asked for water from Houston County for years and they're rationing. I mean, it's rationing is a harsh word, but that's what it is, correct? I mean, we're asking for thirty thousand, they're giving fifteen. And it's because Houston, it's because here you can't, it's not because they don't want to or anything, they can't physically.
They've got a number of problems with that.
Tennessee Ridge, they, they, they're having a horrible time right now and they're experiencing the same thing we're experiencing here and that's rapid growth. So.
Well, my question here is, are you working, can't we work with Montgomery County? Because in our case in Indian Mountain, they come straight down Hayes Ridge Road. They're already hooked up on the, it's already across the county land on Hayes Ridge Road, which you could hook Seven Mile Ridge up to, and, and this whole section, you know what I'm saying? It's already there if they brought it this week.
That's what we want to do, we want to get as many as we can, right? I mean, North Stewart is the healthiest out of anyone around us. I'm comfortable in saying that because I'm pretty familiar with their water system.
But I believe that will be woodland this week, yes.
Right, right. And, and, and again, we're, we're simply partners with them, we can't make decisions for them. I know a lot of the folks call my office and wanting water and I'd love to get it to every one of them, but I, we don't own a utility company here in the county. This resolution is just simply saying, we want to work with everybody and start exploring our options. That's, is that, do you have anything that you, no, that's, that's.
Motion to do a.
We, second. Motion by Mr. Paul, Mr. Teager, second by Mr. Cryer. That, that simply, that's all it's saying, so. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number sixteen is the approval of new animal control committee appointments. Ms. Jeanne Frederick was the, I don't wanna say secretary, but she controlled the funds after they were approved for the animal control committee, when the animals were being brought in and we, we come in with a plan to pay for those, those pups and things. She handled all that. She has since left. The animal control committee has asked that we replace Ms. Jeanne with Ms. Misty Kenny and Ms. Larissa England on that committee. That's what this, this committee appointments are. Motion by Mr. George, second by Ms. Fields, any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Number seventeen is personnel policies for the employees of the following offices. Stewart County Council Clerk, Stewart County Circuit, Stewart County Clerk, and Stewart County Register of Deeds. Will tell you, these are, these, as lots of us have, I've been in touch with a lot of you over this. It is just for acknowledgement. These are already in effect, they're already going forward, and this is just for acknowledgement. We don't get a vote on that, so it's, this just puts it in the record. So number eighteen is the approval of surplus property. That property was listed in, in your packet.
Motion.
Second by Ms. Fields. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number nineteen is the conveyance of land from Stewart County to the Industrial Development Board. It's a resolution to approve the grant of seventeen point two five acres of this Stewart Houston industrial park. This is a necessity to give this over to the board so we can entertain this company a little further that we're talking to. Motion by Mr. George.
Second.
Second by Mr. Joyner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? New business. Okay, I have been asked by commissioner, and that's my job to do this, and we did this in new business. We're gonna do this in new business. This is a resolution that the commissioner has asked me to enter into. We will not have the ability to vote on this tonight. Check with some legal on it, we could vote in new business, but I'm not, we haven't done that in the past, I, I don't think it's good to start now. We will put this towards the next meeting to actual cast of vote on. Does everybody understand that? I'm simply reading the resolution because I just got it tonight, okay? Resolution requesting legislative review of personnel policies statute within county government. Whereas on February the third, two thousand twenty-five, a request was made asking from the county legislative body to employ the assistance of Stewart County Representative Reading and Senator Stevens for review, review of a statute regarding personnel policies that address benefits within county governments. Whereas the legislative body of Stewart County is requesting the legislative representatives to evaluate the statute allowing officials to have separate personnel policies from the county legislative body while adopted. Whereas the county legislative body understands the statute currently allows for listed officials to have their own personnel policy outside of the legislative body adopted personnel policy and is of the opinion that this could lead to inequality within the same county government. Whereas, as the legislative body respects and wishes for the officials to operate their offices, as the statute requires, this legislative body feels that since all personnel matters are handled from a central office, all base policies adopted by the county legislative body shall be equal across the county offices. Whereas the legislative body respects the statute in its current form, but would urge a review to ensure equality for all employees of like duties. This legislative body requests the statute to be altered so that the county base policies required by five, TCA five twenty-three one oh one are the base policies for all offices. If an official wishes, wishes to add more policies outside of the base requirements, then those should be approved by the county legislative body for physical inequality reasons for all county employees. Now therefore, being resolved by the county legislative body for Stewart County, we respectfully request that our elected representatives review and research legislative options that may provide an equal personnel policy statute to prevent any unequal policies within the same county system. This has the February third date on it. We will not be voting on this tonight, but this will be back in front of you in April. So just so you know, you will get a copy of this in your next manual, okay? So just so you know. Say, here we go. I still got a few more. I want to tell you about, about what's going on down at the ballpark, I'm gonna address that. And then I have a couple of small things. The walking trail is probably at seventy-five percent completion. We are working right now for a respective parking plan down there and we think we have that in place. We'll be starting on that soon. The athletic association, the lights were set for bid. Thursday was the closing bid. The athletic association called and asked me to push off the project so that we would not have the guys working down there where the kiddos are at all the time. For a lack of, better term than "out". And it's just too much, there's a lot going on in that part right now, a lot. And they just felt, and, and I, I agree with them, they just felt to push this off. So what I've done is contacted A two H today and we have a first, the lighting project down there, if you get any questions off, till somewhere around the first part of June. We will have it ready to go away before then, but the, the actual work won't get started. If you have any questions about the ball field and the lighting, it won't be started until sometime around the first of June. With that, I want to tell you about a shot in the dark that I had on this grant y'all allowed me to put in for. I put in for another three hundred and, I don't remember the number, let's call it three fifty. Through the athletic association like we did last time, I'm happy to announce we got that grant as well. So more work will be going in down there that won't come out of the county's tax dollar. So there are some projects in the Parks and Recs grant that are, that are shuffling right now as far as the ball field, but I, I mean, we're getting ready, we need to have a Parks and Recs meeting to address some stuff because we're getting ready to start all of that. The broadband grant that we applied for, we finally got the executed contract from the state. We will be starting that ASAP. That will be putting wifi in the courthouse thoroughly. And that will allow the library to start on some programs that Ms. Gracie has wanted to start on and that we've worked on to, to get them going. So that's the other part of that grant. So, did anybody else have anything?
I've got, I've got two things. I think your resolution up there kind of covered it, but basically I got something typed up. Basically just, it was a motion to publicly state that the county legislative body does not agree with, support, or condone personnel policy, policies implemented by elected and appointed officials that award certain employees additional benefits to include additional paid leave and other benefits that are outside of what the county legislative body approved for all employees of December of two thousand twenty-four. Further, the county legislative body wishes to express to the taxpayers of Stewart County and all county employees that while state law allows these offices to maintain their own personnel policies, I personally disagree with this practice as it has the potential to create inequality in paid leave and other benefits among employees. I, I think what you have pretty much covers that, but, you know, if the county attorney wants to look into it any further, I just, I just really feel like, I understand why people do what they do and like how the elected officials have their own personnel policies, but at the same time, you know, we're essentially giving more people more benefits. Which brings me to another thing that I'd like to bring up, and I know I've talked to you about it several times before, but where I work at in my agency in Montgomery County, if for some reason Mayor Golden closes his offices or closes the county offices, we are compensated by either comp time or pretty much giving us some flex time, right? So not saying like if you close your office for half a day or we close the courthouse down for inclement weather. There's still people out here patrolling the streets, there's still EMS workers responding to calls, there's still dispatchers taking nine-one-one calls. The highway departments out here with, with trucks. I really feel like we should be able to, to do something for those people. Yes, it is their job, yes, they're the ones that said, hey, I'll take that off, I'll do that, but at the same time, I want to show them that, that we do have their backs and that we're there to help them. And, you know, we see them and we see what they're doing. Do I think eight hours of flex time is gonna crush this budget? No, I don't. You're essentially talking about a fraction of people. You know, I don't know how many people the sheriff has out on the roads at one time, I'd say it's probably close to six. EMS probably has six people, you know, Ronnie probably has a handful of folks, a couple of dispatchers, you're looking at probably twenty or twenty-one people. If you've got eight hours of comp time or eight hours of flex time, I don't think that's gonna bankrupt us. But it's a way that we can show these people appreciation. And it's like I said, it's not something that obviously we're gonna vote on today or anything like that, but just something to research and look into. Obviously, Montgomery County is much bigger than we are, but, you know, their budget can withstand a little bit more, but I really feel like if it's something we can look into, I, I think there's a lot of excess in some places. You know, you look at the budget in June, where some of these offices are, are buying office supplies and doing light on transfers just to, you know, try to keep the money in their budget. So if there's money there that can be used for flex time or, or for comp time, I think we need to, you know, investigate those avenues and see if there's a way that we can reward some of these people to get a little bit of a, you know, a bone, I guess, per se, whenever some other county offices are closed.
So essentially what you're saying is we should look at if we have to close down the county for inclement weather, what you have EMA, EMS, sheriff, any of the road department, any of those guys that are mandated to come in, we have to have here. You're talking about those people.
Yeah, getting someone, you know, it doesn't have to be comp time, it doesn't even have to be overtime, and it could be on a case by case basis, like when we investigate this, if it comes out to, you know, we have inclement weather and, and you close your office in the courthouse for one day, you know, essentially it's eight point six hours. If you close it for half a day, it's, it would only be four hours, four point three. You know, over twenty people, you're talking eighty hours of straight time. I, I don't essentially think that that's gonna bankrupt us. I don't think that, I think it'll be, is it gonna be something, yes, but is it gonna be a lot? No. And, and I also say case by case basis because if we have a natural disaster or something happens and, you know, the county shut down for a week or two, that's something that we'd have to explore. I, I don't think it would be possible to pay employees for a week or two while, while we were out. Do I ever see that happening? Probably not, but you never know. I just want to be fair, I, I feel like they deserve it, they're out there, you know, answering the call, they're, you know, they're away from their families. Yeah, I, I get it, I, I was, when I brought this up to one other person, I was told that they knew that when they took the job. I one hundred percent agree. I knew that when I took my job. But at the same time, it feels good knowing that if I'm at work and somebody else is at home being paid for it, I'm being compensated for it. That, that lets me know that somebody somewhere cares about me and they have my back. And I feel like we could extend that offer to, to some of our guys here.
I'll definitely do some research, get with Ms. Heather and the department heads and sheriffs and Greg and, and see what this looks like monetarily. Clearly, that's a shot in the dark.
One hundred percent, yeah.
I've, I did, your first item, you stated that as a motion, is that to Charles?
Yeah, I would just, I would, yeah, I would have Charles look into it, investigate it, see if he can come up with, sorry, Charles, I'm putting that on your plate, but not like you don't have enough going on, so.
Because, or do you have a second? Do you want to have a second to his motion?
My second.
Second. Is there any discussion, further discussion about sending this to Charles and letting him come up? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Is there anything else coming for the law?
Uh, yeah, I, uh, league policy has been written by, I think, four officers and, and that I don't agree with. I say, they say they can do it, but I would say I advise them not to do it. Because their cost to the county, and all the other county employees are not getting the same benefit as what they have in their book in their policy. And y'all know me as well, as, as long as I've ever been up here, I try to be fair to all your county employees. And this is not being fair, but they'll write their own policy, and then you talk to the county. you talk to the county, talk to the county, and go, they're superseding this, this commission here, is what they're doing, they're super, saying, hey, we're gonna write our own policy, y'all are gonna agree to it, I don't see that, and I, I don't think it's right, I'm trying to be a nice and I mean on this, but I don't agree with it, uh, tomorrow when they find out them four officers were getting better benefits, the other county employee, you think your other county employees are not gonna be upset about it? They're gonna be upset, cause these four people wrote these policies up, and saying we had to live with it, and I don't think they ought to be able to write their policy, and then that court had to agree to it, and that is your county legislative body right here, and when it, when it, um, maybe, uh, I don't wanna, uh, I'm trying to make it easier than I'm making about yet, I just don't agree with it, and, uh, I think everybody wanna be on the same page, all their county employees, and I don't think four people ought to be able to set up and write their own policy, and they say, well, we can do it, but I'd advise them not to do it, because they're going against other county employees when they do it, and that's, I guess that's what I'm, uh, I just don't agree with it, I feel like being fair to all your county employees, I always have, I always stood for them, and if there, them four there, them four officers, if they were being denied something, I'd be fighting to live them like the wood everybody else, and you can believe that, and, and you can believe, and, uh, I just don't feel like it's right, four officers dictate what their county legislative body should do.
The, uh, the state statute is, um, is, is broken in this, um, I don't know that it will ever be fixed, I, I agree, I, I met with the officials, and I, I let them know upfront my opinion on it, I don't agree that, that an office should be able to change benefits, now, they, every, you cannot have one set policy for the entire county, it does not work, it wouldn't, but, when your benefits are different, I do understand, this was in there before, they didn't, they didn't add this later, uh, about the maternity, they didn't, they, they didn't do any of that, it was in there before, but, now that it's brought out, I do see, uh, I mean, I, there's an issue with it, but, but the state statute says you don't have to agree with it, you don't have to like it, you don't have to do any of that, it just has to go in here for the minutes, and that's, that's what we did, we've, we've, we're taking a motion saying that the county legislative body didn't agree with it, you guys voted on that, I have Charles come up with that, we're sending a resolution to our state representative and our state senator, um, saying that we feel like that is a, that is a broke measure at the state level, not at county level.
Wasn't it back when the, all your county used to, their fees would come to the officers, they paint their own power, and stuff, the fees don't come to them often, it's like, they, and y'all through the budget process.
And speaking of the state, a lot, over the last two weeks, um, that's what, that's where the spirit of that came in, those are a lot of the officers, the fee officers at that time, so clearly they had their, their own budgets and things like that, they, they didn't.
It really shouldn't. In the old law, in the old law.
I agree, but I also believe that as a county legislative body, I think you made a case tonight to, you know, that's, we're sending it to the state, it's broken, we'll send it there, I mean, I don't know that we'll see any, anything changed, you might not, you might, I don't know.
But the other county, I understand the other county, they having their problem, that we're pretty much, I mean, county, they having a problem like you.
I'm sure there's other counties across the state that have the same problem, none of our joining counties.
That one, I, you're not having their problem.
Well, I mean.
I think it'll get fixed, but at the same time, people having different policies doesn't bother me, but when it affects dollars and cents, that's what bothers you.
That's where I'm at, uh, being fair to all your county employees, and ain't nobody gonna go in there and tell them people how to run their office, I don't know a person here gonna sit there and, and go in there and dictate to them, and be wrong, go in there and dictate to them how they run their office, who they are, who they for, all this, uh, we ain't gonna get into that, but when it comes to benefit, they all ought to be the same, they all, everyone of them ought to be the same, and that, I, I just gotta voice that, and I'm trying to be, and he, and I know well, and me, and I know well, but I don't agree with what's going on here.
I think sending it to Charles and asking him to do what you guys as a body have asked him to do, you're going, you're well documented that you said you didn't like it, but there's nothing you can do about it, you know, I, I, we, I thought about this for two weeks, I've spoke with the officials, I've spoken with most of you guys, some of you in your homes, most of you on the phone, but it's, it's not, I mean, it's, it's a state law that doesn't favor the legislative body, so, anybody else have anything? Go for it.
Motion.
Second, motion by Mr. George?
Second.
Second by Mr. Thomas, all in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Thank you.